I call the Planning Commission meeting for May 2, 2024 to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Rosetti?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on April 11, 2024. So moved. Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Upstein.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have four public hearings and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this proposal will be given the time to do so. Or some people may just have questions and we'll try to get those answers. And with that in mind, we have a conditional use permit to allow a pet shop grooming at 8827 Mennor Avenue, Unit A. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Hi, my name is Missy Vaughn. And do I give you my address or the address of the place?
Either one.
Okay, my address is 8719 Fortney Road in Orwell, Ohio, 44076. And I am a dog groomer, I'm a certified dog groomer. Right now, I work in Chesterlin and I'm wanting to open my own shop, also along with some retail, some dog food retail and some accessories, too.
Thank you. Just hold for a second. Is anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We have just three items recommended for conditions with this CUP.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Motion approved with the three conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We have a conditional use permit to allow an adult daycare center at 7350 Industrial Park Boulevard. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Hi, good evening. My name's Alex Andrews. I'm one of the landlords for the center. And I'll give you a brief history on the previous...
Give us an address.
Oh, 7350 Industrial Park Boulevard. And the space was previously occupied by visiting physicians, so it's fully ADA compliant. And these nice folks will make a great retenity.
Thank you.
Sandra Ward, owner and operator of the business. Been in business for 13 years here in Mennor. I'm just moving locations from Hamilton Drive over to Industrial Park Boulevard. Space is ready to go. I don't see any issues. Any questions?
Just hold for a second. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, we just recommend the two conditions noted.
Yes.
Anything from the commission members? Mr. Crocker?
Just curious, are you looking to expand at the new location? Is that the reason for the move or just a better rent, better location for you?
Just ready for a change, yeah, new location.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the two conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Have a great evening.
Number three is a conditional use permit to allow a crematorium at 8778 and 8790 Munson Road. That applicant is asked to have it be withdrawn without prejudice. No motion here? Motion.
Do we give a motion to what?
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. We have a formal rezone of 8.16 acres from M1 Light Manufacturing to B2 General Business at 6010 Heasley Road. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Please give us your name and address.
Timothy Posar, CFO of Heasley Hendrix Properties LLC, 6011 Heasley Road.
Before you get started, Kathy, could you just speak a little bit about the process, I guess, for number four and number five? Of where we're at.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for both of these items, just to give everybody in the audience and listening at home the opportunity to understand, since we don't do these every day, a rezone, there's a three-step process to follow. First, there is an informal review request that is considered by the Planning Commission where there is no vote, but they just give feedback. Then the application, if they choose to move forward, submits a formal request for rezone and it goes to the Planning Commission with a public hearing. And the Planning Commission then makes a recommendation to City Council, who will hold a separate public hearing and then vote on the proposed zoning amendment. In both instances, per the city charter, because these change of lands will prompt a zoning referendum, so they will go to the voters of the city after the final vote is made by City Council. So they are on course to do that with both of these items that are on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Take it away, Tim.
All right. Well, we were in here for the informal, now we're back for the formal rezoning request. We tweaked the site plan a little bit to kind of simplify the property lines. We also included the retention basin, the regional retention basin that will service all of the properties as part of the rezoning requests. We had a traffic study completed, so we had to add some turn lanes in on both Heasley and Hendrix. So we made those changes to this plan. And with that, if you have any other questions?
Hold on one second. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Well, we've noted about 15 conditions recommended that would go in conjunction with the rezon request and the preliminary site plan specifically for parcel one. I guess I would ask if the applicant has any questions. And in particular, we made a note on item four for cross-access easement to parcels two and three in the future to help alleviate traffic concerns on Heasley.
We were planning on having a cross-access easement for all the parcels so that the very north can go all the way through the second parcel and also the first parcel to Hendrix. So that was part of our game plan from the beginning.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Sir?
Mr. Haddon?
I have a bunch of questions. I'm sorry.
Sure. Go ahead.
A couple, so it's all about, a lot of this is about traffic. For the, you said there was a traffic impact study done?
Yes.
And it was recommended that you put a turning lane off of Hendrix also into the unit?
Correct, yes.
It just seems really odd to me, do we have to make that turn and stuff? But that's what they recommended.
That's what they recommended. We did provide that to the city.
And then for Conrad's Tire across the way, they have a driveway where they're going to cross, cross the hash marks now that are going to be installed on Heasley. Does the engineering have any concerns with that, Kathy, anywhere? You see what I'm talking about, the Conrad's, their driveway is right across, right under the Heasley and road there? Someone's trying to make a left and turn out there, they're going to have to cross that hatch. And that's, they're okay with that?
I specifically asked engineering if they had any further comments with regard to the traffic and they said nothing at this time.
And there's no thoughts of moving your entrance across from Conrad's?
That could come up in the final site plan review.
I'm really confused about the traffic as you come in off of, if you're going south on Heasley. When you pull into that driveway, you're heading right into where the people are exiting from the, that would be from what the pass-through, I guess it would be?
Yeah, that's if somebody got in line and then decided they didn't want it to car wash, so they would come around and exit without having to wait in line.
And this can all be tweaked later, but it just seemed like that's going to be a head-on, you know, traffic concern to me. So something maybe look at in the future, maybe you can clean it up somehow.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
And also, when they go to use the vacuums, they can still turn in from the front of the store, right? Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, from the retail store?
Yeah. No, well, if they come and take a right and then they turn into vacuums, they can turn right in there and get their vacuums then and come back out. All right, that makes sense to me. The parking in the back, where you have the eight spaces where the air machines are at?
Yes.
Are these going to be like super long hoses? Because usually, I see those air hoses where people can go, you know, next to them and then they go all the way around.
You know, until we have the user for this particular site, that'll all be answered on the final site plan. This is a conceptual drawing to show you what our user had thought up of a flow and location. It could be changed based on the city recommendations when we come in.
All right. My other thought was that's going to be for order pickup, so is there going to be like a crosswalk there so the pedestrians can cross there without, you know, some sort of designation if it goes this way?
If we have to add it, that's not a problem.
I'm almost done. Existing easement for Heasley Creek, is that to be shown on here on parcel three? Do we have a drainage easement over that creek? Or do we know, Kathy? Parcel three, they have that?
Well, that'll have to be shown on the final?
I would assume.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's something to bring up now, you may want to look into that, that we probably need to have an easement over that. And there is a hundred-year floodplain elevation on that, which I'm sure will be shown on the final. And then the drive access, so you're going to put an access from one to two to three? Nothing's going to come off of Heasley on the three or two that you're aware of? Like a right turnout or?
Yeah, right now, we're not showing anything because, you know...
You want to have the cross-traffic use? Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Varga?
My last question was exactly that. How were you intending to access parcel two and three? And was it through the one entrance and exit on Heasley or the entrance and exit on Hendrix? Was that the intention to get to those two lots?
No. The traffic study report addresses, right now, there's a right-in, right-out that they conceptually worked into their calculations for three and two. So you could go right in, head in south, you could make a right in or a right out there. Same thing with parcel three, but there would be an access easement that goes all the way from parcel three, all the way down and around out to Heasley, so, or Hendrix, excuse me, so they can go out Hendrix.
Let me understand your answer. Is that you're intending most likely to put another entrance for two and three?
That's what the traffic study anticipated in their numbers. Correct.
In and out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to tack onto the entrance, egress, exit here. Question is, these are all right-turn-only turns, in, out?
Correct.
So we've seen around this city that right-turn-only's are ripe for violations. I don't know another way of saying it, but there are many people that make a left out of a no-left turn thing. The last time you were here, I recall that one of the reasons why this is being proposed is because of the commercial traffic you intend to have from the Heasley Road area there. Anybody exiting this place cannot go north on Heasley Road. They got to go right on Hendrix, they got to go right on Heasley. There's no place to turn around and go north.
And again, we don't have any users there. That could be one user there and they could say, no, we're fine with that other entrance. And that would all come into play when they come in with their site plan, whether or not it's allowed. In the traffic study, we did ask the traffic expert what he thought if we could get right-in, right-outs for both those parcels, and he said yes. Now, I agree with what you're saying on the right-in, right-outs, but until we have a user and we know exactly what their thoughts are on that, we wanted to make sure we covered it in the traffic study.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion, and this is a recommendation.
We make a motion to recommend with 15? 15 conditions?
15.
And the affirmative?
Affirmative. Yes, 15. In the affirmative.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You, too. After five, we have a formal rezone of 14.5 acres from R4 Single Family Residential to PRD Planned Residential Development Overlay at 7260, 7276, 7286, 7290 Atkins Road. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
7976, Pat Perino, 7976 Mayfield Road, Chesterlin, Ohio, with Perino Builders and also Epcot. And what we want to do here is build a 55 and older community with amenities and to age in place and to, basically, there's a bunch of Epcots in Columbus. We just started one, not just started one, we actually started our model home and our spec home and the clubhouse in Sheffield, which is 63 lots. And then Jeff, which we're partners, has, Jeff, you can, if you want to come in.
Jeff Small, 2167 Mennor Avenue, Painesville. We're 20th Century Construction. We have an Epcot community in Concord Township. It's 59 lots, so it's an active adult community. We're in our first phase. We have well over half our first phase sold out within a year. It's a luxury-style community.
Get into the mic a little bit more, please. Sorry about that.
Sorry. I apologize. Not a public speaker. Yeah, they're basically ranch slab houses with an option to get on the bonus room on the second floor. Our specific community has a clubhouse and a pool. And we basically attract a lot of the people that are within a five-to-10 mile radius who want to downsize their house. They have 4,000, 5,000 square feet. They're empty nesters, their kids have left the house, and they don't want all the maintenance that comes with having a big lot, big yard, big house. So they want to downsize, but they still want to stay within the community. So this serves the purpose of staying within the community, the residents, staying close to the grandkids, the families, keep them together. This particular development has a clubhouse, a pickleball court, and a bocce court. So that helps residents in the community feel like they're part of a community rather than everybody in their individual houses just living in their individual houses. It brings them together. They have events at the clubhouse, multiple events from wine tasting, bourbon tasting, anything that brings people together. So we kind of start that up, get people engaged, keep them active. And it's basically a maintenance-free community, so all the grass is cut, all the snow is plowed and shoveled. So they basically do not have any maintenance.
It's also lock-in place so that if they have houses in Florida or Arizona, snowbirds, there's people around to watch their homes because it's more of a tight-knit community and so highly sought after.
Thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak for this proposal? You could come up. Give us your name and address. Are you for or against?
Well, I have questions, so...
Okay, then you're...
But I'm positive, so I'd like to be...
All right. Fantastic.
All right. My name's Mike Maggio. I live at 7597 Kittery Lane. My wife and I have just moved here. We've been there 18 months now, but we absolutely love the development. I'm not here to talk bad about anybody because I've seen Mr. Perino's work and he does great work, but we do have some questions regarding the design, the layout. First of all, we were here February 29th and a lot of you guys asked a lot of great questions, but what I see up on the screen now is totally different than what was submitted on February 29th. Okay? I'll go into some of the things that concern me. One of the things that attracted us to Kittery Cove was the mature trees that are in the development. I've been an arborist for 40 years. I've served as a shade tree commissioner and an assistant forestry manager for a local park system. Kind of here to discuss the proposed buffer zone adjacent to the property. On the 29th of February, the planning directors somewhat expressed concerns, which sounded to me that maybe the buffer zone might be minimized or eliminated. The existing trees that are along that buffer zone, which is on the west side of that property, they serve many purposes such as screening of a new development, keeping heavy rains from washing soils into an existing gully or creek. Some builders will tell you that they'll plant evergreens as a screen, but we don't need that because we already have existing trees there and evergreens are going to grow in a pyramidal shape while the existing trees that are there already have canopies that are two or three times the width. And the question is, who would maintain the evergreens if they were planted? The trees that have already been there have been there since 89, I'm assuming, so I don't see why we would need to possibly have those removed. They also hold the soils with their expansive roof system. And as far as this creek goes, I don't know if it's a creek or a gully. Some people say that it flows to Atkins, but I really don't see a flow in there. I see a large amount of water that sits after heavy rains, but I don't know where this goes. I was told by a city official that it's our responsibility to keep the creek clear of debris, so we've done that. We get rid of the leaves or branches that fall in there. But what I need to know is, does this water then flow somewhere? Because if it just sits there, the water doesn't disappear until it seeps into the soil. And sometimes it could be two weeks, three weeks after a heavy rain before it's even gone. So my concern is, who's responsible for this creek or gully? Is it the city of Mennor? Is it the county? I mean, does it actually flow to Atkins and then go somewhere or not? The other concern, as far as the trees go, you know, Mennor being a Tree City USA member, I think we should act to keep as many trees as possible, just like you tell the residents to maintain their trees. And if you have to remove one, you ask for a permit. So I'd like the city to try to keep as many as we can. Regarding the lots that are south of where Jerome Drive is ended, the elevation is much higher. Will that soil be removed or will it be spread out? And if it's sloped towards our homes, then that water could possibly fill the gully or the creek there. And that creek, if that's not flowing somewhere, that water is not going to go anywhere. And if it's too high of a slope, it's like a roof system that doesn't have an adequate gutter that can't get rid of that amount of water. So we need some type of mound there to keep water from this property, this new development, from coming into that gully. Because otherwise, it'll wash sediment into the gully, make the gully shallower, which eventually could cause it to overflow and come into our yards. I think on the previous design, it says some of the houses are going to be like 35 feet of height, but if the ground is still as high as it is right now at that end, then from our vantage point, it's going to appear that the houses are maybe higher than 35 feet. They might be 40 or 50 feet in height. So that's why we're trying to keep this buffer zone of trees as much as possible. Everybody is welcome to come out and see exactly what we experience and what we are trying to save. I know that, you know, when it comes down to it, sometimes it's about the money. The more homes, the more the city makes for taxes, the more the builder makes. But I'd like to see somehow that the three of us, the residents, the builder, and the city come to some type of agreement that's fair for everybody. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we get into the against, do you want to speak about this gentleman? We've got the evergreen trees, the creek responsibility, elevation, Jerome Drive, and just general water issues.
Okay, so with regard to the landscape buffer, there's the planned development overlay, district regulations are very detailed with regard to design requirements and buffer requirements. And of the 18 conditions that we've recommended specific to the preliminary plan, one of the things is to provide a tree inventory list that will provide identification of location, size, and species of existing trees and that the developer shall preserve as many of the healthy trees within the western buffer that do not interfere with any infrastructure of the subdivision as much as possible. And also, they have to provide a landscape plan that will address a lot of these issues. Some of the issues with regard to stormwater and runoff and so forth, those will be vetted during the final subdivision review process. We don't get that detail of plans at the preliminary level. Certainly, that will be something that the engineering department will look at. And even should this move forward and should a final plan get approved, then there's another review process of just the improvement plans that go through the engineering department and an even more rigorous review. So there's a lot of different layers of review that are involved. I can give some assurances. We have a registered landscape architect on our staff. We also have an arborist on our staff. When this came before the Planning Commission, back when the church was proposed a few years back, our staff actually went out and walked that buffer because they were required to have a buffer as well. And so we can do that again to see what's changed, if there's brush or what healthy trees there are. But because of the requirement of the tree inventory list, we'll be making sure that any healthy trees would be maintained as well. So I don't want to get into anything with stormwater and, again, erosion and elevations because, again, that will be more thoroughly vetted during the final subdivision phase.
Thank you. But any stormwater created within this parcel is captured within it and handled here. There's no runoff in either direction, east or west?
It's not supposed to be, no.
Not supposed to be.
Right.
Under the final design?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? Please come up, give us your name and address. And we're going to try to keep these to four minutes, okay?
Okay. My name is Lola Durk and I live at 7283 Atkins Road, which would be directly across from that. My concerns are the wildlife that is living over there right now, that I have teenagers at home. If we're going to put an elderly community over there, not only am I now feeling like I'm living in New York with big apartment buildings, a lot of elderly people who are going to complain about kids, my taxes going up. This was a big draw for me, even knowing that Lake Tran owned it, moving out of Painesville without having apartments or condos that tall or big and community centers in my backyard. In this case, it would be in my front yard. As well as all the traffic on the street, there are days already, I can't get out of my driveway for two to three minutes and you have a one-lane road each direction. You get to the red light, nobody can turn left without somebody hanging on the horn and pushing, trying to get you to pull out onto 306. Now, I can't afford higher taxes, and I don't want my kids not being able to play in the driveway because people are yelling that they make too much noise across the street or having to be stuck in my house. Last time with the church development, and I kinda feel the same way this time, we were not really kept informed or notified. I got the letter to come to this meeting. I wasn't aware there was a previous meeting. And the same thing with the church development. I kinda feel like the citizens and the people it's really affecting on a day-to-day are not being included and paid attention to. But yeah, I mean, I live there every day, and I don't want this in my front yard. Did anybody stop and think what it affects the houses across the street? What's it gonna do to our sewer lines when all these tap in? It's gonna cost me money if it blows all my pipes. It's gonna cost me money if it raises my taxes. And that's not right to put in a fifty-five. We have a senior center. We have a lot of things in Menter. Why do we need to put a community center, a clubhouse, and a special development just for that? We also have a lot of apartments. So that's my concerns, and so I'm really against this. And I'd like to be kept more aware and up to date and not just kinda, oh, it's a done deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? Please come up, give us your name and address, please. And again, we're gonna try to keep these to four minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Bob Gru. I live at seventy-two sixty-three Atkins Road. I've been there fifty-two years now. I've seen everything that went on over there. As far as that rainwater goes, it's a swamp over there. The water goes nowhere. The trees have been there since I've been there, and my kids played over there in the woods until they built Kittery Cove. Then they built Rain Tree. We got nothing but traffic. It's a cut-through street. Everybody that lives in Willoughby and workers in Willoughby go down that street to go to work, and they're constantly on that street. I sit in my driveway and I count cars going by every day. Every hour, there's fifty, sixty, seventy cars going through there, and they're speeding. No one, I've called this councilman how many times about getting police officers over there to catch some of these people. They're going forty, fifty miles an hour down that street. Now, if they put all these cars, where is the traffic gonna go? Like she says, I can't get my mail. I gotta wait and stand and wait to get my mail or back out of my driveway to go to 306. It's just horrible over there. And we can't take any more traffic. That's the main thing, the traffic. Went through this back in the eighties when Lake Tran bought it. They wanted to put a parking right over there. Well, we beat 'em that time, but this time, I don't know. I hope we're not wasting our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? Bill, come on up. Give us your name and address.
William Hill, five-three-oh-five Strawberry Lane, Willoughby, Ohio. I am a member of Painesville Baptist Church, which this property is the west of our corner lot there, and I just wanted to ask if, is the buffer, landscaping buffer, gonna remain pretty much the same as was proposed with the Grace Development? And that's what I was just wondering. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Kathy, could you speak on the, I'm sorry, is there anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, could you touch a little bit on a traffic study and the buffer with the church property?
Well, specifically, maybe the, I guess the applicants can speak to the traffic study. I know there was a comment made about, let me back up. We require, the city required a traffic study, and then the traffic study was provided. Yes, the names of the developers are on the traffic study, but that's because it was for them, and they have to have a certified engineer to complete the study. So we do put validation into what that study reveals. As far as the, as far as the buffer goes, the applicant is asking for the buffer along the east side, not the west, but the east side, which is up butting the church parcel, to be reduced, which the planning commission and council have the ability to reduce if they feel it's appropriate and it still meets the purpose and intent of the district. If you should choose to go that route, we would recommend, at the very least, a six- or eight-foot fence that goes in there in addition to landscaping that would be, that would go along that eastern property line. The property is vacant for the most part. There is the church that butts up against Reynolds', but there is a significant amount of vacant land that goes in between the two. So that's the request of the applicant at this time. And if I may, just speak to the process, because I know that gets misunderstood a lot. As far as the informal rezone and the discussion that was had, that was not a public hearing. It is a public meeting. Anybody can attend, but we do not make notification of those meetings, so we are not required to make notification. Everything is per code. When the public hearing is considered at this level and at council level, notifications go out. So there's a difference between a public hearing and a public meeting. All of our meetings are open to the public, but a public hearing, you receive notification because it is a formal consideration. The informal rezone is just a discussion. There's no votes made. It's just an initial presentation, get some feedback so that they can move forward with a more formalized plan, as you see here. So they are allowed to change the plan. There's nothing holding them to the informal rezone. So just, again, a little bit of understanding, a little bit of background as to our process. We are following the process. We aren't intentionally not informing anybody. This is per code as to what the notifications are.
Thank you. Does the applicant, you have anything you wanna add to this, some of these questions that you heard, some of these concerns?
Well, the reason that most neighborhoods like fifty-five and older, because they leave when there is no traffic. They don't, most of them are retired. They don't wanna leave when there's traffic out there, so it reduces the amount of traffic. You don't have, you know, kids coming, five, six, seven, friends and cars and all that, generally, generally if there's grandkids or something like that, but it isn't as a pass-through neighborhood as if you had all families there that all have friends and, I don't know if you all know, my kids, my daughter left, which was youngest. It was like we lost a whole entourage, you know? There's no one coming over like, what are we gonna do now? So people like this type of neighborhood, you know, if you had the bus stop there, it would be, you'd have a lot of buses, a lot of diesel, a lot of all that. If it was a church, you'd have, you know, parking lots full of cars. So this is a good solution for neighborhoods, and that's why they like it, because it doesn't create, it doesn't overburn the schools, because there's generally no kids there, and it doesn't create traffic, because they're not gonna leave when it's, if it's busy out there. They'll leave at ten o'clock instead of seven o'clock in the morning. They're probably still sleeping, so, you know, so it's a good thing, and it's been a good thing. If you look at the Columbus area and how many have gone up in Columbus, and it's a good, you know, for all of us that are aging. I'm sixty-four. I mean, so it's great to be around people instead of living in your house by yourself and that sort of thing, so.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I guess I'd like to speak too, and maybe he can expand on the difference, just for the benefit of everyone here, of the cluster versus the single-family unit, the difference in the dimensions, and also discuss the separation and the recommendations of the administration at this point on the cluster units and the ten-foot separation, that there be fire rating for those walls between those. We certainly wanna work with them, but we would like to hear the comments of the applicant.
So the clusters are side courtyards, and so each side courtyard is further away because it's cut in to the houses. Everything we're doing at Acacia and Lynnhurst are the same distances, and we have had no trouble. Same thing with all of our communities, our Sterling Lakes and Pepper Pike. So I guess the clusters are side courtyards and the regular homes are rear courtyards.
So if you pull up the...
You gotta get right in the mic here. You're too tall.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if you look at the side courtyards, like just the front of that house, that probably fourteen feet of depth is right at the side setback yard, the side yard. So it's only that portion of the house that has the side yard with the adjacent house. And how they're set up is, the house next to it has a flat wall going all the way, you know, let's just say north and south or front to back, sorry. So the houses aren't, the side courtyard isn't a house that's front to back the same width all the way back like most traditional single-family is. So that's the difference between the single-family and the cluster. So for fire code, I was talking to Dan Prino this morning, so we talked a little bit about fire rating, fire resistant. How they're doing them in Columbus is anything that's within ten feet, they're fire rating the eaves and the overhangs, and then they're fire resisting the walls. So the houses can be, you know, structure to structure, wall to wall, ten feet, and then they put fire resistant on those walls through sheathing, siding, just different materials, fire-treated lumber. So that satisfies the cities down there as far as the fire department and their codes and what they're looking for, so the fire won't spread from house to house. So I talked to Dan about that. He was gonna do some research, he said, and then he'd get back to me. He was gonna try today, but he didn't get back to me. But that's kind of where we feel like how we have them set up on the lots, we can put fire-resistant walls where it's needed and then fireproof the eaves and overhangs to prevent fire spread.
And all these houses will have soffits and overhangs, right?
Yes. Yeah, yes.
They have to, that's our, I'm sorry.
Yes, and that's why we put the single families, because they're straight, front to back. Those are on the larger lots, so those are seven-and-a-half-foot side yards. So those houses, structure to structure, are fifteen feet apart. So I think the magic number was around ten, I think, from what I talked to Dan about, and he's trying to get clarification on, because this is all kind of new, I believe. The cities are starting to implement fire resistance and fire-rated eaves and overhangs. So, and I submitted to him a cross-drawing of kind of what they're doing in Columbus, and so that's kind of where we left it.
Thank you. Kathy, you had something?
So Larry and I had a further conversation with Dan Prino, who's the chief building inspector. He's been speaking with a couple of different building inspectors in other communities, as well as our fire department, and we've spoken about it internally as well. If you note in the conditions, items three and four distinguish the setbacks for the cluster homes versus the standard single-family, all of which are detached, but again, the cluster being somewhat narrower, but has that ten-foot separation versus the standard single-family, which has the fifteen-foot. So and under item five, it says it's recommended that dwelling units not separated at least fifteen feet, gutter to gutter, should either meet a fire resistance rating as described in 2019 Residence Code or have a whole-house sprinkler system. I think we should strengthen that to say the dwelling units not separated shall. And Dan indicated that they, a one-hour fire rating for the homes with a ten-foot separation is what we're looking for. And it can be done. It can be met, as they've just indicated, but the city will certainly work with them on that. And when it goes to final, we would get more specific drawings and so forth, but I think we should firm up that recommended condition number five to say shall and not should, and it's specifically a one-hour fire rating for the homes with a ten-foot separation.
Structure to structure, not gutter to gutter?
Correct. But as you described, the walls that are only, only the walls that are impacted...
Fire resistant.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything from the administration?
And this is all new to me, so I'm kinda trying to get...
Mr. Varga?
Couple things. Just, let's follow along, since we're thinking about that right now, that fire rating thing. Keep in mind, and based on your designs, and your buildings look very attractive.
Thank you.
But when you're ten feet apart, the roof lines are eight feet apart, so keep that in mind, and that once you establish that closeness to the property line, it's also not just the vertical surface, but I think it's also part of the roof plane itself has to be fire resistant. Also, and just, you know, the code covers this, so the residential building code covers this, so I don't think it's a mystery. But keep in mind, when you have a rated wall like that, now you have a problem with windows or any openings, vents, louvers, anything like that has to be fire-rated, especially the opening.
Correct.
You have to be careful. Now, I notice in most cases, it's shown as an optional window in some cases, things like that, but it also applies to louvers, vents, anything like that. It has to be protected. Now, I have a question about the plan. The red and kind of greenish-yellow plots, those are just building, maximum building areas, right?
Correct.
They don't reflect, and for everyone's...
The house could be, the house could be a little smaller.
That doesn't actually reflect the floor plan.
Yeah, there's three different series of plans, Plaza, Promenade, Portico, so they're all a little bit different size, a little different feel to them.
And we've talked about the spacing based on the fire code and fire resistance and stuff like that, but the one thing that kinda bothers me a little bit is there's a large number of units, or half the units, the ones in the southwest edge of the buffer and at the other buffer on the northeast, the building area goes right up against the buffer. So if there's an opening at the back of the house, you literally walk into the buffer. And I'm not sure how you maintain that, because the buffer should be kept in a relatively natural state, and your building is actually, has the possibility. Now, it depends on the plan and whether you actually build all the way to the back. I'm thinking, though, that this plan is not any bigger than it has to be, this plot. So I'm concerned about the fact that even from a maintenance point of view, how do you maintain the back of your house without going into the buffer? So my recommendation would be, or my thought is, that you need to have some strip of maintenance, you know, an area to be maintained, like this light green area on the plan, around the back of the, just for maintenance and be able to move from one side of the house to the other without walking through the buffer all the time. Otherwise, the buffer's not gonna be the buffer anymore. You're gonna be using the buffer for a yard.
The buffer has to be maintained, and the buffer has to be protected by the homeowners' association.
No, no, I understand that.
And the envelope is there just to distinguish the fact that if they should put any other structures behind the house, they can, but we, you know, we wanna know where that line is.
I understand, but if everyone is in order just to like walk from one side of your house to the other, you're walking through the buffer all the time, you're gonna deteriorate the buffer. It's not gonna be natural any longer. It's gonna be their backyard. So what I'm getting at is that it might... I'm sorry. I don't wanna cough in the microphone. Sorry, I got a bad cold. And it's driving me crazy. So that's my concern, is that you're treating the buffer like a backyard.
Pat, you gotta get into the mic here. Chuck, you wanna speak on that?
Chuck Zucks, thirty-four, six-hundred, Chard Road from Polaris Engineering. I think the units in the northeast corner, one through nine, the proposed road, I think we could shift west at least five feet and provide a five-foot strip back there.
Just a maintenance, you know, an area to be able to go from one side to the other, right?
And I think at the south end, we could probably curve that cul-de-sac a little bit to the east, so if we wanna read into there at least a five-foot buffer strip, I think we could accommodate that.
Right, and so that would give, that would make, I don't wanna reduce the buffer, but I just, I think you need to be able, five foot between the back of the building pad and where the buffer starts.
So we could shift that road over and accomplish that.
However you do it, I think that would be required, though, because, like I said, ultimately, people would be using the buffer like their backyard, and that defeats the purpose of the buffer.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the, Mr. Hat?
Point of clarification on this, is it gutter to gutter or house to house? Because I think the way Jeff was explaining it was house to house, not gutter to gutter. Is it gutter to gutter?
Gutter to gutter.
This says gutter to gutter. That's why I'm confused. It's gutter to gutter?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Are you guys aware of that?
I thought we were talking, sorry, I thought we were talking structure to structure, and then we were gonna fire rate the overhangs and eaves.
Gutter to gutter.
Well, okay.
Gutter to gutter has to be 12 feet or 10 feet?
15 feet, 15 or 10.
So, the side yards have to be bigger than five feet? Am I doing the math correct? Is it six feet some inches?
Yeah.
Six feet five inches?
There you go, a little bit wider, yeah. Depends how, how big your gutters are, your eaves are. I just, I wanted to clarify that, because I was confused. And you said, you said house to house, and I'm like, well, this says gutter to gutter. So, whatever the, whatever the residential.
What he's saying is the house wall. Hold on, guys, hold on.
House wall's fire resistant.
We're getting all out of sorts, I'm gonna get yelled at here. If you're gonna speak, you gotta speak into the mic, okay?
I think what Jeff is saying, the house has to be 10 feet, right?
10.
10 foot? So, if the gutter's overhang, that, that would be the fire rated part of. If we meet the fire rating with the house and not the overhangs, we would have to fire, protect the overhangs. Right?
Correct.
Kathy, I saw you scrambling.
No, that's.
Okay.
That was a request from fire. I mean, it can be discussed further and maybe vetted at, at council, but it was, it was clearly gutter to gutter, so.
So, another thing we could do, too, is chop three inches, three inches, three inches, three inches out of, out of that house and bring it, you know, if we have to. If we, if we can't accommodate it, you know, that'd be very easy for us to, to do, take two foot out of the whole house. If we needed to, you know. Or do the fire rating depending on, you know, because sprinkler system would throw it all, you know. We don't want to do that.
I got you. I do have a question for the engineer. I know there's been talk about the drainage in the, in the buffer area. Is there a chance you can move that closer to the, I mean, what's it there for? Is it there to drain that buffer area on the west side or?
Oh, the storm system, we should. We just showed a rear yard drainage, because it's conflicting. We want to save the trees, but if people want a mound, you can't do both. So, we'll, we'll probably end up doing yard drains, maybe standard how we do them down the property line every other one.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Bring it all toward, to the street and then bring it over and then?
Right.
And then one more question for the developer. I'm just curious why the pickleball courts in front by Atkins and not like in the back? Because I know those things can be loud, and I wasn't sure.
There's special balls you can have that aren't loud, yeah.
Is that what you're gonna require?
It is away from the houses.
It is.
It is away from the homes, so that's why we put it on that side. But we could very well flip it back.
I was thinking for the residents on Atkins more than, you know, because I know that, that ding, ding, ding can drive some people crazy, so. But if there's special quiet balls, maybe just put that into the.
Yeah, and we'll just put that in the HOA that they have to use as special balls.
Thank you, didn't know that.
That seems like a reach with the special balls, so. I think start looking at swapping that thing to protect the noise from Atkins. And if the people that live in here want to hear the ding, 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 then they can hear it.
What is across the street, I mean?
I know, I know. I know, but they're here first. So, you know, you have to be the good neighbor when you're not first.
Mr. Chairman?
Dave?
The other part of that pickleball court is, are there gonna be lights on that?
No.
No lights, so it's not gonna be nighttime use?
Nope.
Okay.
It'll be in the HOA, too.
Another question, the houses, especially the cluster houses that are so close together, what's the soundproofing on the walls, the exterior walls?
These houses are proven, I mean, they're built all over. You can go see them in Fair Lawn, you can see them in Jeff's community. They're pretty tight. There's been no, no resident complaints from each other. I mean, they're built everywhere, there's Columbus, there's, I don't know how many communities, hundreds. So, it's not something that's, that's ever been a problem.
And just one more question, is you market this to an over 55 community?
I'm sorry?
You market this to an over 55 community. If a young family wants to buy a house here, will you sell it to them?
You have to, 20%, it's the law, right?
Another question.
But only 20%?
Yeah, it's, it's, these houses aren't marketed for single families typically, because there's no basketball course, there's no playground equipment, there's no sheds. It's not geared towards young families with kids that want to move in, because all the people there, I think the average age is around 65 or 66. So, most people want to live in a community with neighbors that are the same age, similar interests, pattern of life, you know, that's why they have the community center to kind of bring them together. That's typically who they attract in these communities.
I think I'm referring to young family, young couples without children.
Oh, we could, yes, we would sell them to.
20%.
We aren't restricted.
Yeah, 20%.
Thank you. Mr. Varga, oh, Dave, I'm sorry, do you have more?
Uh, no, but I want to amend the.
Okay.
When the time comes.
I just wanted to clarify, there was some conversation back and forth about this, the fire rating, the issue of the closeness. Anything closer than 10 feet, you're gonna have to fire rate the walls and the eaves. Where you're 15 feet, I think the, only the eaves and, but there also will be a section of the roof, too. But it's all based on the Ohio Residential Building Code. It's not, it's not an, you know, it's not a subjective thing, it's all out there, so.
We're gonna have to follow it, we understand that.
And the building department will require you to do that. I do have an additional question, I'm sorry. Where we only, where we are only 10 feet wide or less, what is it, five feet wide between houses? Or what is it now?
10.
10 feet. Who maintains that?
The HOA. There's one landscaper for all of them.
Between, between the houses, so there'll be no fences put up?
Oh, there's fences, but they got gates in them and they.
Okay, so you, you would have a five-foot space.
10.
On each side, no, but if you put a fence up down the middle, you only got five.
No, not down the middle, each house forms, it would be house, it wouldn't be down the middle. It would be from house to house.
That's what I was trying, I was trying to get at.
Yeah, it's just.
How much of this?
Courtyard areas where.
But I'm talking about this side, for instance, right? Or where you have the other units where you have walls on both sides and, you know. So, they're not gonna put up additional fences and things like that and get into these really small spaces. I'm also thinking from a fire department access ability to get to between the buildings.
Just in the side courtyards, there's fences, right?
Yeah, so, let me, let me kind of interject. So, in Columbus, when the houses are five-feet side yards, they typically have a back fence and a front fence, and within that area, they maintain that area. So, and then the landscaper cuts everything else around it. But anything inside the fence is their responsibility. And it's typically not even grass that's in there, it's usually fake grass that they put plant in there. In Concord, we do not have fences at all. So, there's, there's separation, but we don't have fences, because the city did not want, the Concord did not want that. I don't think we've kind of landed on that part of the development yet, but we're leaning more towards probably fences.
Maybe just on the cluster ones.
On the cluster ones.
They wouldn't be on the other ones.
The cluster ones are the ones that are closer together.
Closer together, correct.
But they have the side courtyard, which puts a pretty big separation on the one side.
So, that would be the, the side of the fence would be the courtyard side.
Well, it would be like.
But then the distance to the next house is only three and a half feet.
No, it's 10 feet. It's going this way, not this way. It's going.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You're going from corner, from house to house.
Yes, house to house.
If you look at that plan.
Right there, yeah, it's right there.
Look at that plan, there's a fence in the front.
That's the fence.
With steps going back to the patio. And in the back there, where you see the green, that's like fake grass.
I see.
So, they call it pet grass?
Yeah, that's.
So, you don't have maintenance?
My concern was that we didn't create these little.
I knew you were.
Little areas where they're almost impossible to maintain, become almost a safety hazard. Okay, and there are slightly.
You gotta get into the mic here.
That would be unsightly. Thank you.
You need mobile mics, we need headphones.
Or a bigger microphone, you know, like you said, Johnny Carson, now I'm dating myself. Jeff, is that all? Is there anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman, one question for the applicant. So, in condition number 13, they talk about the lounge clubhouse, pickleball court, bocce ball court to be constructed, and also in number seven, they're asking for elevation. So, could you speak to a little bit about build quality? A lot of times, unfortunately, in the past with some of these developments, you know, as an amenity, we find out that it's something from the big box store, and one storm later, it's gone. So, if you could speak to what your intention is for the, especially the lounge and the clubhouse, what kind of build quality and so forth?
Like, like the rest of the houses. The lounge, does that have drywall? You got it? It's, the lounge is gonna be built, it's just smaller than a clubhouse, but it'll be built in the same manner as the homes are built.
Okay.
Now, either it'd be drywall inside, or we might have more of a theme of wood, you know, like, like a board-on-board inside, probably what we would do, make it look more loungy, you know.
But it sounds like you're on the right path.
Yeah, no, it's not gonna be something, we're gonna, like a gazebo.
Permanent structure.
It's permanent structure.
Okay, and with that in mind, I think when we get to approving, if, if number 13, if we could just add that any, any amenity would be of substantial build quality for longevity?
No problem.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Varga?
I'm sorry, I have one more question. There's this triangular piece of land at the south end of the property. It's still, it looks like it's still being designated as being owned by the church. What's the, what's the?
Are you talking about this property, this? This right here?
Yeah, the piece just beyond the cul-de-sac.
This gentleman is in Florida. From what my title company told me, he's like 92 years old. So, I'm not sure where he's at, but I had a phone number. I left him three, four, five messages, and he never returned my phone call. My thinking he's maybe in, in assisted living, and maybe you guys should do an internet domain and put it as part of this.
It's undeveloped land now?
Yes, it's undeveloped.
And, and there's, and you don't have access or control over this property right now?
We tried, we wanted it, and the city had asked us, but I can't get a hold of the guy. I had my title company trace him down to Florida. Like I said, we'd left messages, but he didn't return them.
And the worst condition in the future would be that you'd have to make, provide access off the cul-de-sac?
Nope.
Isn't that space completely landlocked?
It is, but we wouldn't have to do anything with it, we could leave it the way it is.
Then that's more a question to the city, then.
There's a condition that we placed at least to have access to, if they're not able to be secured, that's item 16. And incorporated into the proposed rezonary and access easements shall be provided on the proposed cul-de-sac to allow the Greater Cleveland Baptist Association to have access for maintenance.
The engineer knows it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crocker?
And I know we covered it before, but I just want to, I want to make sure. So, item number four, it clearly states minimum separation of structures gutter to gutter, 10 feet. You guys are okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, but yes, we have to be.
We would like, I would like to talk to Dan about it a little bit further and just clarification. I mean, but I just like to spell it.
It's on there, what we're gonna vote on right now, so that's, that's, it's there.
It's there, it's there.
Is that all? I'd like to say a little something here. This type of community is the type of community, correct me if I'm wrong, that people in Mener that have these half-acre lots, they want to stay in Mener, right? They want to move somewhere where they don't have to do anything. And they want to sell their house that they live on, because we're mostly half-acre, three, three quarter, or one-third acre lots. They want to sell their house that maybe needs a kitchen renovation, that maybe needs a bathroom renovation, to a young family that can then afford a house to live in Mener. Because all the new houses in Mener right now are $500,000. And I've got kids that are, and I can, they're not gonna be able to afford that. So, I need developments like this. So, people that have these family houses that boomed in the 60s and 70s and 80s, so my kids can then buy these houses and do renovations to it and so on and so forth, so they can stay in Mener. We have an aging community here, and I, and I like this solution. We have a housing crisis across the United States, and I think this is a good fit so that we can get young families to move into houses in neighborhoods that built Mener in the late 60s and 70s. So, that's kind of where I stand on it.
Another thing, if you look at the crowd in here, we're not getting any younger, you know what I mean? So.
I could go in-depth about how Mener is an aging community, there's stats to back it up, but. I, I, anyway, I, with that, I'll make a motion for positive recommendation. And I think we're gonna adjust some of these. If I correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna adjust some of these conditions as we go, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to, to, what's, what's the word now? To recommend with a positive assertion with the 18 conditions. And are we gonna, we're gonna adjust some of these conditions? Go ahead.
We're gonna change number five from should to shall.
And.
There was a change to 13, to what, substantial building?
Build quality.
Substantial build quality. And was there any other?
Mr. Chairman, I think in number five, you also wanted to add the one-hour fire rating. I believe Kathy put that on there, too.
Yeah, if we could, if we could get rid of the words "it is recommended" at the beginning and just say dwelling units not separated at least 15 feet, gutter to gutter shall either meet a one-hour fire rating, resist, resistance rating, I'm sorry, one-hour fire resistance rating, and then the rest is the same. And shall at the end, specific building materials shall be discussed further with fire and building.
Trying to figure out where to get my five-foot.
Mr. Chairman? Item 11 is to be amended to not encroach on that 25-foot buffer.
That's right, okay.
With the lot size. Jeff, I think it's.
How do we, we have to do, we gotta word that a little bit better here. Kathy, could you help us with that one, number 11? That was the, him changing.
Well, I don't want to use the word buffer, but the, the engineer recommended that an additional five-foot would be provided between the buffer area and the proposed lots along the eastern.
Which is, yes.
So, let's go ahead and just redo 11 here, say it so, so Jackie can, she's giving me the, the eye here.
Okay, well, that, that, that is specific to regard to the 25 feet, and if the commission's okay with that, that's, that's the one aspect of it. You can indicate at the end of that sentence, there shall be an additional five-foot separation.
Kathy? It's gonna be on both sides, though, right? It's gonna be on the, the west and east side, and that's, this one refers to the east.
Oh, so maybe we make it its own item?
I would say make it 19.
Okay, go ahead, then, go ahead.
You're doing a good job.
So, we're gonna have 19 conditions, and the 19th one being?
There'll be an additional five feet of separation between buildings, building pads, and the, the adjacent buffer.
You're good? Please call the roll.
I didn't get a second.
No, I need a second.
Oh, did you, did you add number 13, what you wanted to add?
Yes.
You did, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Crocker, you second?
Yes.
Jackie?
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
No.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Under new business, we have a miscellaneous review to transfer a conditional use permit at 7350 Palisades Parkway, is that applicant here?
Please come up.
Give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do at Palisades Parkway.
Hey there, my name's Michael Loeb. The business is located at 7350.
You gotta get, you gotta right into the mic here, yeah.
The business is located at 7350 Palisades Parkway, Mentor, Ohio, 44060. The business is under contract to be sold and simply asking for a transfer of that conditional use permit to the new business.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration? Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Sorry. Oh, we, we transferred the conditions that were in the original conditional use permit. So those are just a repeat of what is in the existing permit and just indicating the new permit holder's name under item one. As well as noting that any signage is separate.
Anything from the commission members? Mr. Varga?
This facility's been operating for a while under other ownership.
Yes, sir.
And the city-- Kathy, has there been any other complaints, issues, problems with the way it's been operating up until this time?
Nothing with the operation of the car wash.
Or no complaints about traffic patterns or anything?
Nothing recently, no.
Thank you. Thank you.
And is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, on the plan diagram here, there's a clouded area on the east side of the property. What, what is that for? That generally indicates a revision of some kind?
That drawing was just from the building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with five conditions?
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
An architectural reimage of a commercial building, Walmart at 9303 Mennor Avenue, and applicant's here. Please give us your name and address. Guys, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Mahfouh Hatim and I'm from MS Consultants. I'm here representing the Walmart building at 9303 Walmart Mentor Avenue on behalf of our client--
You gotta pull that mic into your--
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so should I start again or?
Yeah, that's okay.
Right?
Just get, get into that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a Walmart building. We want to repaint it.
Again.
Again, yes.
Again.
So. Basically, it's refreshing the Walmart brand. That is the new brand colors and we are just requesting the, on behalf of Walmart.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We've recommended two conditions.
You've read the staff report and you're okay with the conditions? Okay?
The signage? Separate signage permit, yes. We have, we're writing in those, yes.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the two conditions?
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So before we adjourn, I'd like to say a little something here. I'd like to thank City Council for providing the planning commission with the opportunity to obtain professional development through the National Planning Conference this year. This convention provides a wide range of sessions, some topics I found interesting related to using design and developments to capture storm water and reuse it in a functional way such as gardens and water features, incorporating public transportation stops into higher density developments, especially communities that are targeted for seniors, and using community surveys to engage the community when new zoning codes are being considered. Throughout the conference, the nationwide housing shortage was also emphasized. One development I was able to explore and learn about was a high-density residential housing area with condos and apartments. Throughout the middle of the development, a pedestrian path was built that included recreational gardens and playgrounds. This area is called the Lorraine Greenway and it was cared for by the residents and area businesses throughout donations and volunteer hours. On a fun note, pickleball played a predominant role in many of the opportunities to learn the sport that is sweeping the nation. Overall, I found the experience valuable to learn the best practices and new perspectives from Mennor. Does anybody else, there was two other members that came. Do you have anything else to add?
I can say a few things.
Mr. Varga?
One of my primary interests were to investigate or to find out what folks are doing throughout the country about the redevelopment or replacement of malls. And I'm not gonna go into the details, but there were some interesting concepts about how planning approaches these relatively important projects. In my mind, the probably largest single planning issue in the city will be dealing with the changes that'll take care of the, that will take place at the Mennor Mall over the next 10, 15 years. There was another interesting thing that, I mean, I went to a whole bunch of sessions, but there was something else I found very interesting and that was the ability to work with developers on building more, slightly more dense developments, mostly housing we're talking about, or multi-use with housing, and being able to work with them relative to parking requirements and things of that nature so that instead of requiring them under existing parking requirements, to have them invest in other amenities nearby or improve the neighborhood or make the entire neighborhood more accessible to public transportation or to other options. So those I found particularly interesting and creative and things that may come to bear on the city of Mennor over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crocker?
Well, this is my first conference, so I guess my first impression was, it was overwhelming, massive, far larger than I ever expected it to be. 4,000 participants, I believe, nationwide. And I have newfound respect for Kathy and for her team and the amount of work and the analytical research that goes into long-term planning. And I just would like to thank you for what you do here and, and thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have anything?
The only thing I'll add is, and I keep, to stress enough, the housing crisis, it's not, not just in Mennor, it's not just in Lake County, it's not in Ohio. It is a real problem nationwide. And it's something that is at the forefront of, of all planners across the country. And it's something that we, we really as a country have to address. The thought of just keeping things as is is no longer working. And we have real problems, real shortages for all different generations, from, from, from our kids that are just coming out of college, looking for homes, to the empty nesters, to seniors who want to, again, either, and I'm not talking the 55-plus, I'm talking even beyond that, but who want simple housing, living together, still want their independence. We heard it across the gamut. It is, it is a real issue. And it, there was comfort in hearing and knowing that we are actually for once unified. And it's, there's not as much of a divide on how to handle it and tackle it. And it's recognized as, as a priority. So it was very beneficial to network and to speak to other planners, speak to other communities, hear from the consultants and hear how they're trying to address it. There's some very progressive states out there. We've got a ways to go. And not every state's alike and not everyone's gonna do it the same way, and that's okay. But I think if we can learn from each other, I think we will slowly get there. But something does need to be done, so. That was, that was my takeaway, so.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.